Mom and daughter tag team go to the school board and they make clean they do it with the best of the verbal knowledge and they drop it and they make them leave because they can't cope with it. Mom and daughter tag team this rap sucks my hair isn't perfect none of this makes sense. What is up my people fam just glad to see you once again I'm still alive and kicking fam. This is what is happening because I got royalty free music playing I could freestyle while not be lame. My rap sucks but I don't care it's a good way to start a video fam. Hit it yeah 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 perfect sense welcome. Got John Eagle in the chat Mac Mac Dougal what's up man Jeff Ross is the roasting master Joseph Greeney what's up disaster? Richard Palmer he's the man because hairy bean bag is under him. Henry Bob Swillikers yes that's cool I like that name yes I do Juliet Smith what's up with Brandon Mitchell yo? Peter Griffin is always at my show Jim Bo doesn't like Nick who cares bro who the hell is Nick and why should we know because? Royalty free music is over now you're looking at me with bad posture got Pensacola right behind me the site of audit Palooza is where you might find me. I wanted to keep going for a second there. XXGox keeps telling me he's come in I said yes Gio you're coming bro of course. Alright hi guys hairy bean bag what's up what's up what's up what's up? If I didn't shout you out in the uh music is because uh music ran out. Nut chocolate rapper or the new Eminem M and M M and M. Alright I saw this on solo yakkers channel yesterday you guys like this layout? Better or this layout or this layout which which one you like? Talk to me brown sugar hi Carrie. Carrie is my twin we're the same age we play pool together we've known each other a long time we're both from up uh north. We're born in the same month think I'm a few days older than her this one right here? This one over this one? Number two is that this one is this number two or you like this one I kinda like this one I'm gonna go with this one for now. Thanks Brandon alright so I saw this on Yakker solo Yakker's channel yesterday is the armed fisherman. This lady this girl and her mother I guess there's some LGBTQ thing that a bunch of tax money went to? And they use that tax money to attack people that disagreed with them? In social media and stuff so this girl very smart girl was being attacked by them and she's a minor and she's gonna give a this uh? School board a piece of her mind and she does a fantastic job I'm also inviting her to audit Palooza which is? August or October 19th excuse me right here in Pensacola that's Pensacola beach but? It's gonna be in Pensacola and hundred dollars a ticket all you can eat all you can drink all you can smoke BYO buds. There will be security there it will be drama free live music possible comedy guest speakers. Uh the auditors that are gonna be there most likely now I can't guarantee anything I'm just telling you they told me they probably come okay? Long Island audit lackluster Freeman possibly I told him he can come if he wears a lab coat. I've invited bow bow said he can't make it uh James Madison audit audits the armed fisherman eyes on the state Jeff the goat gray. J C Playford the pre goat the goat pre goat J C Playford. Um Jeff Gray is also gonna try to contact Carlos Miller who's really 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 kicked off this movement. Carlos Miller from Pennak news photography is not a crime um. Tickets are a hundred bucks email me your full name and phone number I'm calling everybody personally I'm making sure no crazy people come in. We're not gonna have haters we're not gonna have cops uh unless the cops are you know understand our constitutional rights. Happy birthday to my twin you have a twin? That was distracting. Turn my headphones up auditoria fat rhymes what boy with the swine line? Out of there with fat rhymes coming from the south side. Alright let's watch this girl man she is fantastical. Her oh Leanne Marie please subscribe to her the link is in the description this girl's wonderful let's listen to what she has to say to the school board.
I want you to tell you a story and I want everyone to listen closely imagine a young teenage girl who attends public school. She has her own style and beliefs but because they aren't the norm she's bullied daily by others especially boys. She's called vile names slammed into lockers cursed at pushed on the bus and threatened. The girl just wants to be accepted without judgment she asks the school counselor for help. But instead is shown a chart and told she is not being bullied and it's just boys being rude and annoying. The girl speaks her concerns at a school board meeting but the board does nothing. The bullying continues the girl endures it because of what her counselor has told her. Some teachers push their ideologies and curriculum that attacks and denies the girl's lifestyle and beliefs. She speaks about it at the school board meeting the next day the girl is summoned to the principal's office and told everything the teachers say is correct. She's ashamed and told to bring her concerns to her counselor and not to a school board meeting. The girl remembers her previous experiences with the counselor. Finally the girl's parents remove her from the school and she's a and she's enrolled at a campus where she's accepted without judgment and gains amazing confidence. She wants to advocate for students like herself and speaks at more school board meetings. The board doesn't like what she says and repeatedly tries to intimidate and silence her. She's mocked on social media by a school board members wife. When the girl speaks about it at the school board meeting the board members walk out. The wife and the wife's group cheer the board members the board member defends his wife's mocking of the girl. The wife's group mocks the girl during the meeting and the board members allow it. Eventually the wife and her group create many social media posts mocking and publicly shaming the girl and her mom.
So they're using tax money to promote that leftist woke stuff and anyone who's against it? They campaign against her and bully cyber bully or whatever you call it with tax money. That's where the issue is you do that stuff on your own time that's one thing when you start taking tax dollars and doing it no 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 no. And she's a minor and the people who are bullying her are up there on the school board they're in charge of things.
The board members wife calls them disgustingly hateful. Others in the group agree and want to ban the girl and her mom from the meetings. The school board defends the wife and her group and claim it's the girl who is part of a hate group. The girl sees and hears all of this. Imagine how that young girl feels being humiliated for her beliefs. Imagine how she feels reading those posts online that mock her and others who believe as she does. Picture that girl standing here while adults bully and shame her. Now imagine that girl is transgendered. Is the behavior of the school board and those who mock the girl.
Yeah if the girl was transgendered it'd be a whole different story wouldn't it?
Still acceptable.
Alright so now let's go back to this fat guy okay and then uh? See what that says everything is good Mr. Mozili how are you and let's find her mom here? And let's see if we can somehow share that screen? And find this thing and then do this thing over here? And stop that screen and then share a different screen share this screen. Stick at this one I'll share that one and then we're sharing that one and then we're doing this on my head's a little bigger or do you like this one better I think we like this. So let's not get carried away again this is Leanne Marie please subscribe to her here's her mom I don't know if this is the same meeting or what but? Watches all these leftists and when I say leftist I mean Republicans and Democrats that the Democrats are extreme leftist the Republicans are just leftists. And then you got constitutionalists there's extreme on our side too where they they take things too far of course. So let's listen to this lady.
For the past few meetings I've been exposing the hate and betrayal perpetrated by a left wing social media group and its supporters in this room including? Board member Mr. King's wife Mr. King has repeatedly defended her and tried to gaslight us.
Oh too much free speech gavel time.
Rather than admit to his hypocrisy and support for a hate group stop interrupting me I didn't interrupt you. Or even apologize in any fashion he laughed it off.
Hi finger legs paranormal investigations and genealogy how are you?
At the last meeting and said in part quote there's an odd fascination turn my microphone back on. So you're violating my first amendment rights and you don't wanna hear about.
First amendment rights.
Limited first amendment rights limited first amendment rights. She didn't threaten anybody she didn't try to start a fight with anybody she when you call them out by name right to their face they lose their mind.
Oh it's not limited buddy.
Just because you don't agree.
She's not making a threat is she?
Comments about other people okay?
Says who? I talk about whoever I want whatever I want I got royalty free music up in this spot. You shut my mic up and I don't care I turn it upside down and put him underwear yeah yeah join the women's swim team that's what I'll do. I use my extra rudder if you know what I'm saying auditoria with fat rhymes.
Exact doesn't doesn't say if you can't.
There's nothing to do with the school board.
It does.
No it does not.
Absolutely it does.
I don't know if it's true or not.
Just speak up your minutes are running out.
Screenshots and I have all the information it's true.
Okay I don't care about truth you're not gonna bring your our mind is made up you're not gonna confuse us with a bunch of facts.
You don't care.
I don't want any personal attacks.
It's not.
Not a personal attack she stated a fact. When she says she'll show you that it's a fact you say you don't care you don't wanna be called out by name. You don't like that you're in a position of uh transparency and you can be scrutinized all day every day. Period point blank you don't like it go work somewhere else in the private sector.
Keep going there's no threats keep going.
To that part stop interrupting me please.
I'm not interrupt you if you continue you'll be asked to go to number the second warning.
How you gonna get rid of second one if you're not interrupting you said interruptions buddy.
You have no business calling out. There's an odd fascination with myself and my wife I don't know if I should be flattered or take out a PPO. I appreciate the administration and attention so keep the attention coming unquote. To this I respond don't worry Mr. King there's an overwhelming attention on you especially with all the videos that have gone viral of a child exposing yours and this board's corruption and incompetence. Millions of people have seen how this board treats the speakers at these meetings and now look at what we're seeing right now. Who don't align with their beliefs they've witnessed how this board ignores and refuses to even look at most of the people here as they make their public comments unfortunately.
That's another little tactic they do pretend like they're reading a book drawing cartoons they're too busy texting somebody to listen to you. They're doing it on purpose this because they can't just flat out say we don't give a F O up about what you're saying they do it with their body language and that's exactly what they're saying. The one lawyers former cop slash lawyer now for Clearwater does that every time solo yacker goes to their meetings.
The attention you're getting is extremely negative and it's so well deserved choosing to support a hate group is your prerogative. But when you're a school board member or family to one you have a higher standard you represent all students? And people in the community not just the so-called marginalized ones in accordance with the open meetings act? Anyone has the right to attend and speak at these meetings my daughter wants to advocate on behalf of students and it's her right to do so. She has the right as does anyone else to ask questions to or expose misdoings of any elected officials. How low is your moral compass when you mock the child? You've interrupted me and took up my time I'm going to finish. Do you have any moral compass based on?
No they don't.
Sir I'm not done and I'm going to finish because what I have left to say is extremely relevant especially to this board. Your lawyer is even saying let me continue. Based on certain social media comments that.
I'll move for recess this is too much this is free speech overload they're talking about us they're naming us a person. Don't they know that we're untouchable Teflon everything slips off us we're the rulers here that's why we sit higher that's why we talk down to you. We need a recess here we can't just have some concerned lady redressing our grievances that are guaranteed under the first we can't have that.
And post it appears you don't that's not social welfare that's just hate and propaganda. To all you people who choose to mock speak negatively about or make any false claims about my.
So you guys are gonna leave right gonna violate open meetings there's your attorney hey John I got your bar number.
What we need to do is.
You guys are just a joke over here just a joke.
Dude talk about cowards and you wonder why cops everywhere you go and you try to hold them accountable they're like they would what? We're the government we're in charge of you they literally think they're in charge of you they're above you they're better than you you can't call them out by name. They think they're they have more citizenship or they think they're sovereign honestly from the rest of us. They think they're above us and this is how they act and when you tell a cop the truth that's why he does the walk of shame and turns off and they just turn their back. Cause they're they know if they turn their back on you there's almost nothing you can do about it.
Finished because I don't care if they hear me or not what I have to say is relevant to.
Here come the crybabies in the crowd too that don't like free speech unless it's agreeing with their agenda. The whole point of free speech is to protect unpopular speech like mine.
Other people here especially you Mrs. King I don't know why you're leaving.
Yeah I don't know where your frumpy ass is going.
To all you people.
I don't know where you going with that frumpy ass girl but turn around and give it a swirl with the vanilla chocolate and strawberry too I don't care I'm trying color just like you yo.
People who choose to mock speak negatively about or make any false claims about my minor aged daughter at these meetings on social media or any other form or outlet. This is your cease and desist notice according to Michigan law section seven fifty dot four eleven your status as a so-called social welfare organization? Does not exempt you in any way your comments about her under any social.
Wah I'm outta here this lady doesn't agree with me.
Social media posts will be held against you all. Fine leave very disrespectful legal representation has been acquired and action will be taken against you in accordance with Michigan laws I highly.
I called American Amy about audit Palooza she probably said yeah it didn't sound like she could make it Joey surreal I did talk to him today he's gonna make it.
Doubt this school board or any other organization wants a lawsuit especially with the optics of mocking and demeaning a child? Or the media attention that will bring it didn't bode well in the past when leftist mock miners. Your kids already have the disadvantage attending this district you don't need money diverted away in order for this board to defend themselves in a lawsuit. In the words of the left hate has no place here now we can see clearly that there is only one board member remaining here what does that say to the parents of this district?
They don't care.
They don't care about what everybody thinks. Everybody left except one person. And should tell you a lot parents about what this board thinks about your opinions especially if you don't agree with them.
One board member stayed one board member had the the coof to stick around. Only one guy cares in the whole council what we gonna do we gonna bounce ya vote you out or whatever it takes. Get you out by showing your mistakes fool.
Thanks for sticking around Robert.
Are obviously condoning mocking a child on social media. Yet you have your superintendent specifically calling out oh well we can't mock LGBT people I agree nobody should be mocked including the LGBT people. But we have an entire board except for one guy that left.
Public meeting lady.
What does that tell you doesn't bode well? Doesn't bode well at all maybe I'd rethink keeping your kids in this district because what else are they hiding from you? Especially you people with very young children you might wanna do some investigation? About previous board meetings about things that were brought up and about some of the people on this board.
If you don't like the rules continue.
Right so keep trying to silence you one step at a time we used to be able to go right up there and speak. But my daughter went handing out copies of the US constitution and at the next meeting.
That's when they put in that cops twenty five foot rule man we can't have people coming here and handing us literature. I seen books turned into guns.
They had this barricade up and they moved us to the back so that people.
And you're not on the screen for the video.
That's right so people can't see us they also edit their their video meetings to censor out like she turned off the microphone and left. So none of what I've said is on there but we have our own videos and it'll get around please.
That's the difference in today's day and age is that we have the technical capabilities to show? What the truth really is from many different angles you can't hide anymore it's over. Everything you do is gonna be scrutinized exposed and if you're going into office to do something that is uh? Non righteous you're gonna be exposed more and more people are getting sick of this. It's gonna be it's not just gonna be auditors anymore you see it's a mom and daughter team here and it's just gonna grow and grow and grow. People start running for local office.
Okay on social media. What happens is gonna really bode bad for this school district it went viral when they walked out on my daughter. Can you imagine what's gonna happen now you really want that negative attention you wanna be associated with a school district that walks out?
So does your daughter actually go to this district?
It doesn't matter.
Actually it does.
So you're discriminating who goes to the what's wrong with you people? Open Beat exact I could come I'm from Dearborn so you know I don't wanna hear that I don't I don't wanna hear that I don't wanna hear that negative stuff please.
There's no need to argue about it.
The problem you need to understand that's a good question you ask anybody.
Alright there you go so that's uh? Who is that Leanne Leanne Marie? Let's get her fucked up to five thousand let's get her up to fifty million subscribers whatever we can do for her. Leanne you're you and your mom are invited to audit Palooza I'm sure the armed fisherman will tell you. And uh yeah that's where we're at ladies and gentlemen again audit Palooza right here Pensacola right behind me. Uh October 19th all you can eat all you can drink all you can smoke BYO buds. There will be security there the people that run it are beefy fighters so there will be no drama. If the auditors are reluctant and coming because they're worried about drama there will be no drama and if there is it'll be quashed in three seconds. We're all gonna get along that day we're all gonna have fun we're gonna do awards raffles uh cooking competition. Lot of big names probably gonna be there Long Island audit lackluster uh I've invited San Joaquin Valley transparency. Rights crispy eyes on the states the armed fisherman John Felix Jeff Gray J C Playford. That's worth the ticket admission alone so. Audit Palooza woo woo audit Palooza wiki wiki. Words are coming to me on that one alright. Hello doing a livestream baby. Call you right back love you. Yeah yeah. No. I need some gangster. Where we gonna be yo Pensacola baby? Audit Palooza in the house who's gonna be there you're gonna find out said Jeff Gray L A I N G. I don't even know what that acronym means so James Freeman if he wears a lab coat Jeff Gray we all know he's the goat. Long Island ought have been the best since J C flavor was the first nince Carlos Miller from Pennak. Jeff Gray is gonna contact him that don't make sense but I don't care there's a pineapple on my screen and it's making me hungry. Audit Palooza baby be there or be trapezoidal. You be rocking at the audit Palooza what I got a dough deck of hydra on there for your amusement. Two hundred seats and counting hundred tickets left we counting if you don't get them y'all gonna be missing out. First annual audit Palooza will there be more I don't know depends if you know how to spell loser. Yeah. Yeah yeah I can't believe you guys still here listening to me do that stupid stuff. I never seen John Wick brother identifier coins I don't know. The rowdy patriot you're more than invited brother email me john felix at gmail dot com your full name and phone number I will call you personally. And all the people that I called that said I can't believe I'm talking to John Felix bless you man that's very uh complimentary and I really appreciate that. Uh and I know there's auditors out there that might wanna come if you are an auditor and you wanna come and I forgot about you. Cause there's so many now which is fantastic let me know john felix at gmail dot com. Again subscribe to Leanne Marie L E A N N E Marie M A R I I M A R I E. I got dope rhymes that you never say. I got dope rhymes that you never say. The school board's starting to hate on me. We don't care cuz mom and daughter is here. We're school suckers in the school board here. Only one guy stayed as you can see, all the snowflakes left in and who cares? Because the song ended again. My timing sucks. What else we got here? Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Pensacola behind me. Seven hours north of me. Audit Palooza. Gonna be user. All right. I'm done. Gotta call my wife back. The coppers will not be there because how will they know where it is? Since I'm not telling anybody where it is unless they have a ticket. Did I disable CC? No. Oh, maybe. I don't know. You mean CC on my, um I, no. I don't know what you mean, but no. Yeah, if you guys wanna come the night before or the day before on Friday, maybe we can do a mass audit. It's a good idea. All right, guys. Subscribe to Leanne Marie. Audit Palooza. Solo Yakker. Snapchat. Everyone have a good day. Thank you.